Let them do the same without the results.
Call this evening's meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. Welcome H. Twain Wilson and his listening audience at WCBU as well as Cable Channel 22. Madam Clerk, the council microphones are open for roll call. Here?
Member Akerson?
Here.
Member Seer?
Here.
Councilmember Graeb?
Here.
Councilmember Jensen?
Here.
Councilmember Montalongo?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Euler?
Here.
Councilmember Rigenbach?
Here.
Councilmember Ruckregal?
Here.
And Councilmember Turner?
Present.
You have a quorum present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'd like to invite everyone to join us and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And we're also going to ask for remembrance of our former mayor, Robert Lenhausen, who passed away last week and who has lived to a very ripe age and was a wonderful leader in our community. So we'll keep Mayor Lenhausen's family in our prayers as well.
(inaudible)
Looks like we have several proclamations this evening, and we're going to start off.
First, we'd like to invite the state champion Richwoods Knights ladies basketball team to join me here in the front. Councilwoman Jensen's going to join me as well.[911.11][911.11](applause)
You know, you and I can move each other's bodies, can't we?
It's frightening, isn't it?
I know it.[935.11][935.11](laughter) But still, we're together.[941.11][941.11](laughter) You know, I really like it better when kids are scholastic.
Whereas on behalf of the city of Peoria, I'd like to congratulate the Richwoods High School Lady Knights on winning the 2018 Illinois High School Association Girls Basketball 3A State Championship. Clap, clap.[996.11][996.11](applause) We had to pause to make sure that our superintendent was here for this, too.[1018.11][1018.11](laughing) And whereas with immense support from their fellow students in the community, seven fan buses arrived at the state championship weekend games on March 2nd and 3rd at Redbird Arena in Normal, with student fans filling two sections of the arena. And whereas the Lady Knights bested LaGrange Park Nazareth Academy 55-46 to clinch the championship title, ending their outstanding season with a 35-1 record. And whereas the Lady Knights' state championship win was the 1,001st win for the Richwoods Girls Basketball Program and the fourth state championship. Richwoods is the third program in IHSA history to reach this milestone, joining Chicago Marshall and Tiatopolis. And whereas the 2018 championship team roster, which the coach will go over, is here. And whereas the Lady Knights are led by head coach Todd Hershey, assistant coaches Ralph Gallo, Parker Gross, Kevin Metzger, and Jordan Hershey, athletic trainer Brad Kofad, and statistician Russ Whitmer. Now therefore I, Jamar Desmire of the city of Peoria, hereby recognize and celebrate the Richwoods High School Lady Knights on winning the 2018 Girls 3A Basketball State Championship in Peoria, Illinois.[1102.11][1102.11](applause) Well, Richwoods is in the 4th district, so Councilwoman Montalongo is going to say a few words, followed by Councilwoman Jensen, whose kids go to Richwoods, and then we're going to turn it over to Coach Hershey and his folks at the team.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the players, the coaches, and the parents. It was an exciting game to watch, and I particularly remember watching during the 4th quarter. And, I mean, I was biting my nails the entire game watching this thing. And they made that comeback because they were following, they were behind at one point, and then they made this comeback, and then they just rallied to win. And I was just so proud to watch that moment. I watched quite a few basketball games during the playoffs time. That's what I really enjoy watching. And then you get a chance to see the heart of a team, not just the team or the players, but the coaching as well. Because I think it all just came together in that final moment, and you get to see the, it all come together. And it's just not from, you know, this year. And, you know, I'm a parent also of a, my son plays golf. But anyways, I know the amount of time that you guys put into this, from the times that you were, what age, probably five years old, so forth, practicing and playing. So there is a lot of time that goes into this, and parents going back and forth to practices, to games. So it was just a really exciting moment to watch this happen for these young ladies, and know that there's going to be a lot of opportunities for them all. And just want to let them know just how proud I am and Peoria is of watching them win this game. So congratulations again.[1219.42][1219.42](applause)
Well, as a proud parent of two Richwoods students and a woman, I was so excited and so proud to see this team at ISU on both Friday and Saturday night win the state championship. It was so exciting, and they did a great job. The coach, all the girls, and the other coaches, it was a real team effort. And I'm very much looking forward to several successful seasons to come. So congratulations, each and every one of you, and to Principal Elliott, I can't forget him. You should have been in the crowd as we sat there, and things were kind of tense in that last quarter. You know, the team wasn't ahead, they were down, and then they were up. Mr. Elliott came in front of the whole crowd, which we had filled with people from Peoria and Richwoods, and he got the crowd going and cheering, and it really got the team momentum going, and they didn't lose a point. I think what was it? And it was 17-0 in that quarter. So thank you, Mr. Elliott, and thank you, Richwoods Lady Knights.[1298.63][1298.63](applause)
Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks, Beth. Beth was there with us. It was a lot of fun, jumping up and down. First one out on the court, it was awesome to have that kind of support. So thank you for being there. Let me introduce you to these people behind me real quick. First of all, is our principal, Brett Elliott, who is our biggest cheerleader, who did get the fans going. Thank you very much for everything that you've done. And then over here, we have superintendent of our school is Dr. Karat, who we have to thank also, because she has supported us throughout the entire, I mean, all of the years before she left, when she came back. We appreciate everything you do for the district. So I've got my other coaches with me. A couple couldn't make it. I got Coach Gallo with me. He's been with me ever since I was a head coach in 2010. And we have Coach Metzger with us. This is his first year with us. He's retired, so we didn't let him retire for very long. We put him to work. So we appreciate his help. The young ladies back here, we have two seniors, Amaya Wilson, say hi. There you go, and Courtney Crane here in the middle. Courtney's going to play basketball somewhere next year. We have juniors Tiana Johnson, sophomore Jada McLeod, sophomore Nia Williams, junior Tori Nimmers, junior Kaleli Markovich, junior Trinity Sims. Turn around so I don't get hurt. We have a sophomore Mariah Hopson. We have a junior Natalie Desjardins, and we have a freshman Gabby Okojie.[1385.11][1385.11](applause) Again, thank you for inviting us here. This is a great honor for us to be recognized, and I'm very proud of these girls, because I think the one thing that we are most proud of is the number of people who have come up to us and said the way we displayed sportsmanship and character on that court. And I'm very proud of them for doing that. So congratulations, state champs.[1412.88][1412.88](applause)
You know, this doesn't happen really often. I'd really like to ask our superintendent, Sharon Damon-Lon Karat, to come up and say a couple words, and also Mr. Elliott, who as described, if you didn't know who he was, you'd think he was like an announcer for WWF. This guy is incredible. He's got more energy than the Energizer buddy. But Dr. Karat, if you and Mr. Elliott could both say a couple words, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Hi, everyone. Good evening. Again, congratulations. We're really proud of the young ladies. Beth is right. Mr. Elliott, it was really funny. When we were down, he got everybody into it, and at the end, he says, "Dr. Karat, I think I pulled a muscle." (laughter) I'm like, "You're young, you can recover." But on a more serious note, though, Peoria Public Schools, it's a great, it's a great district, great, great young people, just amazing instruction and program. So I hope you spread the word and ask individuals to move into the Peoria area and take advantage of the amazing teachers and staff and opportunities we have to offer. What I noticed on the basketball court, they learned tons of lessons for life. There were, you know, there were steals, there were disrespect. Remember the first minute of the game, first two minutes of the other team, the kid, they called the foul. She said something not so nice to the, you remember that, Courtney?[1507.21][1507.21](laughter) And so we got to shoot the basket. But yeah, in life, I mean, we're going to hear things, and people are going to be, we're going to be disrespected. And what you showed, you were so focused on accomplishing a goal. And so I call them scholars and athletes also. So, but first, you're scholars. You're getting a fantastic education. A lot of you are going on to, our seniors are going on to college. And it's just, it's just really amazing. I said, I said, "Some of the games I won't be able to attend, but bring back a trophy." I said, "I won a medal," and they brought back a medal. I got my own medal. So it's really cute. And it says "state champions" on it, so it's fantastic. So again, we're really proud of you. But in the end, it's all about academics and having, you know, a successful life and a great future. And that's what you're getting from your principal and all of your teachers, and of course, coach and his team, just amazing. Thank you. And Mr. Mayor, thank you for asking the kids to come down and recognizing them. It means a lot. And hopefully, it makes them feel good. And you get a big head, which is great, but then channel it in a positive way, okay? Hit the books and get good grades, get good ACT scores. So then you'll have some options, right? So congratulations. We appreciate you, and we love you, Mr. Elliott.[1590.11][1590.11](applause)
Well, I'll keep it short, just like myself. So just once again, it's a huge honor. So thanks to the city council mayor, Artis, for this honor. Just to add to what everyone else has said, the community support here in Peoria and beyond, we had people coming from out of state just to support our ladies. So to look up in the crowd and see, Richwoods High School have four times more than any other school. And then in the, in the 4th quarter, when things were really tight, it was neat to see, just because of these ladies' sportsmanship, that the other two schools, who had already played the consolation game, all of their fans were cheering on the Richwoods Knights as well. So that's true community support and a tribute to these ladies. So thank you.[1633.71][1633.71](applause)
We're thinking too, Pete, too, because there's a lot of underclass ladies there, too. So hope to see you back next year. Next up is Parkinson's Awareness Month.[1676.21][1676.21](pause) to affect 1 million people in the United States. And whereas Parkinson's disease is the 14th leading cause of death in the United States, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, it's estimated that the annual economic burden of Parkinson's disease is at least $16.6 billion, with indirect cost to patients and family members totaling $6.3 billion. And whereas research suggests the cause of Parkinson's disease is a combination of genetic and environmental factors, but the exact cause in most individuals is still unknown. And whereas there currently is no objective test or biomarker to diagnose Parkinson's disease, nor is there a known cure or drug to slow or halt the progression of the disease. And whereas the symptoms of Parkinson's disease vary and can include tremors, slowness of movement, movement, balance difficulty, speech and swallowing disturbances, cognitive impairment and dementia, mood disorders, and a variety of other non-motor symptoms. And whereas volunteers, researchers, caregivers, and medical professionals are working to improve the quality of life of persons living with Parkinson's disease and their families. And whereas increased research, education, and community support services are needed to find more effective treatments and to provide access to quality care to those living with the disease today, now therefore I, Jamar Dismayr of the City of Peoria, do hereby proclaim April 2018 as Parkinson's Awareness Month in Peoria, Illinois. I have Barb and Roger Helene with me, and Roger's going to give us a little bit more information.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Councilmen and women, for this proclamation. Parkinson's has always kind of been thought as a elderly, old age disease. That's no longer the case. The new statistics by the Center for Disease Control shows that probably by 2040, Parkinson's disease will double, so that 1 million will become well over 2 million people by the year 2040. The astronomical burden on society for the medical increase in funding in that will almost triple by the time then. So you can see that basic, simple awareness and advocacy on everybody, the people with Parkinson's, the caregivers, and everybody else is needed. I would therefore thank everybody for giving us this opportunity to come before you and help raise a little bit more awareness and advocacy.
Thanks, Roger. Thank you very much.
We're busy in March, too.
assistance in starting and growing Illinois' small businesses. And whereas with over 390,000 counseling hours, Bradley's 10,415 SBDC clients have created 1,660 jobs and retained 21,200 jobs. The SBDC also obtained capital funding in excess of 311 million and reported export sales are over 975 million. Furthermore, the SBDC assisted 547 startups and 558 business expansions. And whereas we appreciate the demonstrated hard work and commitment that have helped the Peoria area become a nationwide leader in job creation and small business growth, and we wish the SBDC at Bradley University continued success in the future. And whereas we congratulate the SBDC on building the Peoria area economy one business at a time, now therefore I, Jamar Dismayr of the City of Peoria, do hereby recognize the Illinois SBDC at Bradley University in Peoria on the occasion of National Small Business Development Councilwoman Denise Moore, outside of her many duties as city council member, is a huge leader in the community when it comes to business development as well. So I'd like to ask Councilwoman Moore to say a couple of words before our speakers on behalf of the National Small Business Development Center talk. Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I too want to, excuse me, thank the Small Business Development Center for all they do in the community. What a lot of people may not know is that the small, I became familiar with the Small Business Development Center some 25 years ago, and I'm not even that old. And it was because of my, starting my own small business. And now here in Peoria, what you may not know is that they are working a lot with, Kevin Evans is coming down to the Minority Business Development Center to do what he does at the Small Business Development Center down where we are focusing on minorities, women, and veterans. And so the Small Business Development Center is someplace that we shouldn't overlook. There's a lot of services that they can provide. I would encourage you to go out to online Bradley University website and scroll down and find the SBDC. They have meetings that folks don't know about that are free, that provide training. And, you know, I have to give a shout out to Ross Miller, who was the person before Kevin Evans that assisted me a lot at the Small Business Development Center and it made a difference. In fact, while I'm here, I will say that Ross was on the committee to help establish the Minority Business Development Center. So thank you. And so that's the kind of work that is done at the Small Business Development Center. Thank you.
Next, we have Kevin Evans, who is the Director of the Illinois Small Business Development Center. Kevin?
Thank you, Your Honor, Mayor, Councilperson Moore, Dr. McKnight, and each of the council members here. We appreciate the recognition today. Mayor Artis gave us a lot of numbers in terms of what the Small Business Development Center has done historically. And so what I'd like to do is just kind of put it into the minds of the community that the Small Business Development Center here at Bradley, we do five basic things. We help businesses start, we help businesses grow, we help businesses innovate, we help businesses sell to government, and we help businesses sell internationally. And so we are part of a national initiative funded by the SBA called the Small Business Development Centers, or America's SBDCs. March 21st will be the official SBDC Day and we will, are planning a variety of events and we certainly love for you to come over to Peoria next on Main Street and participate and celebrate with us. And we, we will be using the hashtag SBDCDay. So if you, those of you that are not currently following us on social media, you can follow us on Facebook at Illinois Small Business Development Center. And you can also find us at ILSBDCBU. And we would love to partner with you and we appreciate the partnership with the City of Peoria and the recognition today. So thank you so much and we appreciate you sharing with us in this National SBDC Day. Thank you.
And finally, Dr. Leslie McKnight from the City of Peoria staff.
Sure, I'll be very quick. I'm up here representing the City of Peoria Economic Development Office, and we just want to commend the Bradley Small Business Development Center. We could not make the impact in our community without the Business Development Center. I mean, they provide resources and business capacity, every, ranging from a concept, an idea to start your business, to working with multimillion dollar firms in Peoria that's interested in growth strategies in international markets. So to have them there and to be able to have them build the capacity, whether it's through consultation, whether it's connecting them to foreign trade missions and zones, to also helping them continuously grow and change their business model in this ever-changing economic landscape. We couldn't do what we do without the SBDC. So we commend Ross. He's, he's moving on to bigger and better. He's going to be the Director of the Convergence Center at Bradley. And with Kevin being on board now, we're really able to make a difference and create jobs and investment in Peoria. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Next, we have the 75th anniversary of the Historical Letter of Protest Against the Holocaust. Councilmember Ruck Regal is going to join me for this. the Holocaust written by Greek Orthodox Archbishop Demasconos of Athens, the leader of Eastern Orthodox Church in Greece. And whereas this letter states out in world history as the only formal protest of the Holocaust by a worldwide leader during World War II. This formal protest was made at great risk, great personal risk to the life of Archbishop, I believe it's pronounced, Demauskonos, who was in then Nazi occupied Greece when the letter was written. And whereas the letter of protest so enraged the Nazi leadership that they threatened to call the Archbishop before a firing squad if he refused to recant the letter, to which the Archbishop famously replied, "According to the traditions of the Greek Orthodox Church, our prelates are hanged, not shot. Please respect our traditions." Whereas the Archbishop also issued directives to all his priests to shelter the country's Jewish population. He signed forged birth and baptismal documents, making it more difficult for the Nazis to identify the Jewish community. He organized the secret transportation of the mainland Greek Jewish population to the various islands of Greece where they could more easily be hidden. For those who could not make it to the islands, he organized transportation out of the municipalities and into the mountains for more protection. And whereas because of these efforts, over 10,000 Greek Jews survived the Holocaust. And whereas in recognition of the 75th anniversary of this historical document, the Greek Orthodox Metropolis of Chicago and the Jewish Federation of Peoria will hold a commemoration presentation on March 18th at 3:00 in the afternoon at the Peoria Riverfront. Now therefore I, Jamar Dismayr of the City of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby recognize the 75th anniversary of the Historical Letter of Protest Against the Holocaust in Peoria, We have Councilmember Ruck Regal and Susan Katz and a couple other guests who would like to say a few words as well.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm wearing two hats tonight because as Chair of the Peoria Riverfront Museum, about a year ago, actually, it was almost 12 months ago, that we were lucky enough to have on our property the Holocaust Memorial relocated by the Jewish Federation. Since then, it has become a point of community dialogue, as the museum had, had originally intended for the actual museum itself to be as well, and for that podium for community interest to be able to spark conversation, debate, and education. And what we see here in this commemoration of the 75th anniversary is that a single comment, a single action is not in isolation, that those words, that those actions can live on. And it is with that partnership with the Federation that the museum is able to teach and to use that as an educational standpoint for our kids and our youth. Just within the past year, we've had almost 10,000 students come through the Peoria Public School system, and that does not include the other schools. And for part of their, of their education, their learning, they're using the Holocaust Memorial that the Jewish Federation has relocated there, including in the 6th and 8th grade that they've become docents. So I would invite you all to come down for this event on the 18th because it's, it's important to remember that we have a, as a city, a personal connection with a family that is, is near and dear to many of us within this city and that we are not so far removed. There's also another piece that we need to remember is that within the next couple of years, we will probably lose most of those that have made it through the Holocaust. And it is now our responsibility as a community, as a city, as patrons of the world, to make sure that that conversation never gets forgotten, that we carry the message forward, that this never happens again. So with that, Susan?
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruck Regal. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, all the, the members of the council for this proclamation. When we moved the memorial to the museum, we hoped that education would become our focus, and it indeed has become our focus, because the only way that we are going to prevent further genocides is to educate, to educate our children and to educate our community. And this program that we have next Sunday has one more opportunity to do so. I had not heard of Father Demasconos when John Ackerman came to me and asked me if we wanted to do a program. And I, it's fascinating what he did and it shows the power of one person. We all have the ability to change the world around us if we, if we try, one by one. So we're, we're privileged to be able to partner with them on this program. I hope you all will join us. And if you have not been down to see the memorial in its new setting at the museum, I urge you all to please come down and see it and spend a few moments and reflect and remember all those who lost their lives and what we can do so that it doesn't happen ever again. Thank you.
John Ackerman, I'm with the Greek Orthodox Metropolis of Chicago. We, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers, thank you for this proclamation. The event in Peoria will be one of four events that we're holding that week throughout the Metropolis of Chicago, which oversees all of the Greek Orthodox parishes in six states here in the Midwest, including all of Illinois. We will be having event, the first one here in Peoria, then we will be having an event in Milwaukee inside the only parish, the only church in the world built by Frank Lloyd Wright. The next one will be in downtown Chicago at Daly Plaza, at the annual celebration of the Hellenic flag raising over Daly Plaza every year. And then the final one will be in Des Moines at the State Capitol Building. The Iowa Brigade of the US Military liberated many of the concentration camps liberated by the United States forces. So they have a beautiful memorial there that we'll be hosting there. This event in Peoria is especially special to us because of the touch that Peoria has with this. We may think ourselves buried in central Illinois and not attached to worldwide issues like this or worldwide historical events, but at this event on Sunday, there will be three special presentations. One will be the first ever visit to downstate Illinois by the Greek Orth-, uh, by the, sorry, the Greek Council General of Chicago. As an official head of state, she'll be making a visit to Chicago for this, or to Peoria for this event. The other two is a Peoria resident whose grandfather survived the Holocaust in Greece. She will be giving a testimonial about her family's touch on this. On the other side of the coin, I guess you could say, will be a Greek Orthodox parishioner who will be discussing his father's actions. The Archbishop directed the parishioners and the priests to hide as many Jews as possible. And this Peoria resident's father, unbeknownst to them until the late 1980s, rescued 80 Jewish lives by taking them from the Greek mainland on his fishing boat and hiding them on the Greek islands as directed by the Archbishop. So Peoria has both a survivor and a rescuer living within our communities. And you will be able to hear their testimonials, hear how this touches. And I think it further solidifies Peoria truly as an international community, not just a central Illinois community. Thank you, Mayor.
I'm Father Cyprian Sass from All Saints Greek Orthodox Church, and I'm honored to be here. All that I want to add is that aside from being a wonderful bishop, Archbishop Demasconos showed, set a great example for being a true and a good leader of the community. He not only served the ones, the people that he was directly responsible for, that being the Greek residents and the Greek Orthodox Christian community, but he went beyond that and that's what made him not just a true humanitarian, but also an and that's what made him not just a true humanitarian, but also an excellent leader of the community at the time. So we honor him and his actions, and of course, as we are gathered here in the middle of the leaders of our community, Peoria, we thank, we thank you for acknowledging this wonderful man and bishop for what he did, and we pray, of course, you take his example of true, genuine leadership. He cared for people even in the face of personal danger. He was willing and ready to offer even his life for the benefit of others who, who needed his, his support at the time. So thank you very much for this proclamation.
Mr. Ackerman wanted me to let the public know that the event is free, it's open to the public, and it's at 3:00 PM Sunday at the Peoria Riverfront Museum. Councilmember Grab.
I move to approve the minutes at the Joint City Council Town Board meeting held on February 27th, 2018, and the special city council meeting held on March 10, 2018 as printed.
The motion seconded by Councilmember Turner. Are there any corrections or changes to the minutes? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Yes, our first item is for the township. 18-056 is a communication from the town clerk and the town officials with a request to approve the agendas for the annual town meeting.
Trustee Grab.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve those agendas.
Seconded by Trustee Turner. Any discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
We're at the consent agenda. 18-057 is a communication from the city manager and director of public works with a request to concur with staff's recommendation to set a public hearing before the city council on Tuesday, March 27th, 2018, at 6:00 PM regarding citywide sewer rate adjustments. 18-058 is a request for a sole-source purchase of a 4U rack-mounted IP server, camera licenses, and necessary paraphernalias from Midco Incorporated in the amount of $37,189. 18-059 is a request to approve a contract with Kryling Roofing Company for the roof replacement at the Bannon Resident Officer House in the amount of $28,261. 18-060 is a communication from the city manager and director of public works, and you have a yellow handout on your desk for added information, and this is a request to authorize the city manager to approve a construction contract with the lowest responsible bidder for the MacArthur Highway Bridge reconstruction project in an amount not to exceed $6,500,000, including contingencies. 18-061 is a request to approve the contract renewals for the 2018 City of Peoria and Peoria County trustee vacant lot mowing program and enter into contracts in the total amount of $310,395 as follows. A is with Weineger &amp; Sons, B is with Steve Walton Construction, C is P-Town Car Club, D is East Bluff NHS, E is Hulse Landscaping, and F is Hearns Landscaping, and those have the individual amounts listed as outlined. 18-062 is a request to approve the following contract renewals for the 2018 Facilities, Boulevards, and Rights of Way mowing program and the award of contracts in the total amount of $72,290, and that is for Classy Grass and also Steve Walton, as outlined. 18-063 is a request to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Peoria and Peoria County for the reconstruction and jurisdictional transfer of Willow Knolls Road and Allen Road intersection from the county highway system to the municipal street system. 18-064 is a request to adopt an ordinance reserving 2018 private activity bond volume cap in the amount of $12,075,735. 18-049 is a request to concur with Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance amending Appendix A, the Unified Development Code of the City of Peoria relating to multi-story mini-storage uses. 18-065 is a request to concur with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class C1 general commercial district for a multi-story mini-storage and truck rental facility for the property located at 4400 North Brandywine Drive. 18-052 is a first reading review to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 5 of the Code of the City of Peoria pertaining to registration of lots. 18-066 is a request to change from a Class Gb beer-and-wine-only restaurant to a Class B restaurant, 50% food, and the site application for a Class B restaurant, 50% food liquor license with the retail sale of alcohol at Rum's Burgers Bar and Grill, 500 Main Street, contingent upon the issuance of the certificate of occupancy, with a recommendation from the Liquor Commission to approve. 18-067 is a request to approve the site application for a Class B, which is a restaurant, 50% food liquor license, with the retail sale of alcohol at Double A's 7716 North US Route 91, contingent upon the compliance with all building permit requirements, with a recommendation from the Liquor Commission to approve. 18-068 is a request to approve the site application for a Class B restaurant, 50% food liquor license, with the retail sale of alcohol at Sid's Gourmet Kitchen, 5805 North Knoxville, contingent upon the issuance of the certificate of occupancy, with a recommendation from the Liquor Commission to approve. And 18-069 is a request to approve the committee report, which is the policy session regarding waste collection services, and that completes your consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any items the council would like to have removed from consent this evening? Councilmember Seer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 18-063.
063. Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 18-057 and 18-049.
47, or 49 and...
57.
57, thank you. Councilmember Moore.
Item 18-061, 18-062. Thank you.
Councilmember Jensen, or Agasson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to remove 18-064, please.
064, thank you. Councilmember Montalongo.
Yes, Mayor. 1849 and 1865.
Any further items removed from consent? Seeing none, I have a motion to approve the remaining items. Councilmember Reganbock, seconded by Councilmember Turner. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Item 18-057 is the request to set a public hearing on Tuesday, March 27th, for the citywide sewer rate adjustments.
Councilwoman Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I just have a basic question regarding this item with regards to the timing of it. I don't know if we have to have the public hearing. Is there a limit on the, the timing of it? Does it have to be a certain amount of days before it goes into effect? When we have the public hearing, is there a statutory time requirement? And I guess what I'm getting at is I, I'm wondering why we can't have these hearings at the same time or before we actually vote on it as a budget item. You know, we already voted to approve this rate increase, but we haven't had a public hearing yet, so that doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me.
So the, our understanding is that we have to post it in the paper for a minimum of, I believe it's 15 days, and then it was a 30-day period before they could go into effect. So historically, we have done this to line up with the sanitary districts rate increase because their fiscal year starts on May 1st, or that's when they usually increase their rates or set their sewer rates for the year.
So I, I want to, I can't see you Director Reese, but I think you said we're required to have the hearing 30 days before it goes into effect?
That's our understanding. So in order for us to do that during the budget time, we would have had to have the hearing back in October.
Well, that wouldn't be 30 days before it goes into effect, though, right? I'm not trying, I'm not, I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm just trying to understand why we're having a public hearing almost six months after we considered this issue, and it makes sense to me to have the public hearing before we actually vote on a rate increase, which we already did in, during the budget.
We can, we can certainly plan as we move forward from here that if we're going to anticipate in the budget process a rate increase, that we'll schedule the public hearing prior to that vote that the council would take on the, on the full budget at that point in time.
Okay. I, I think that makes more sense, and I hope most of the council would agree with me on that, to ensure that we're getting public input before we make such decisions. Thank you.
Have a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Euler. Is there further discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. And passes unanimously. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
18-061 is a request to approve the contract renewals for 2018 vacant lot mowing programs as outlined with the number of, of bidders.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore.
Mayor, I just had a quick question regarding this item. I know we had to, the budget that we passed was kind of severe, and I wondered, was there any substantial difference in services that were, these individuals will be providing this year versus last year?
The, the services are the exact same. This is really just an extension of the contracts that we had from last year. All the vendors agreed to keep their same prices, except for one, and that was the P-Town Car Club agreed to lower their price to match the East Bluff Neighborhood Housing Services price in order to extend their contract.
Okay. And I want to thank you for outlining on the detailed information that you received a number of, of bids, and you outlined how many were minority business, women business-owned, and nonprofit. That was very helpful to know that those individuals, those organizations are coming forward to, to provide city services, and that's going to lead me into, to the next item, but for this one, I will move for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilmember Turner. Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
18-062 is the contract renewals for the 2018 Facilities, Boulevards, and Rights of Way mowing program as outlined.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Same two questions. Are there any significant changes that will occur as far as services are performed?
This is the, the same contractors that completed the work last year.
Right.
Originally, last year, we had a contractor that started the work that was actually located in Iowa, that had an extremely low price, and they were not able to perform adequately, and so we moved on from them during the year last year. But these are the two contractors that ended the year last year mowing the right-of-way and boulevards.
On this detail for this item, it wasn't as detailed as to if there were any women business owners or minority business owner or veteran-owned businesses that had responded to the RFP. Were there any other organizations that responded to this request besides these two?
I believe there were outside the two non-for-profits. The, the two, East Bluff and P-Town, were the, the two that responded just for vacant lots, and I believe there were some other ones, but I'd have to dig into it a little more to get back with you.
Do you have any idea what the participation of these organizations are with women or veterans or minorities?
I don't have that information right here.
So that's the information I would like for you to come back with, and each time something comes up, I'm going to ask that same question.
Understood.
So you could be prepared in advance. Thank you. But I appreciate the fact that you've gone out and extended the opportunity for other organizations, other minorities and women and veterans to become part of the services that provide services for the city. So thank you for that. I move for approval.
Motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Turner. Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
18-063 is the request to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the county for the reconstruction and jurisdictional transfer of Willow Knolls Road and Allen Road intersection.
Thank you. Councilmember Seer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the sake of transparency, I want to talk a little bit about how we got here today. First of all, the intersection of Willow Knolls and Allen Road is the worst intersection in the 5th District. Traffic counts over there exceeds 32,000 cars per day. I know we all received many complaints, phone calls, text messages, emails, and we just, I just had to do something. So my first call was to Public Work Director Scott Reese, who after meeting with him informed me that we didn't have any money to work on that intersection until 2022, which is four years from now, which is totally unacceptable if you've been to that intersection. My second phone call was to County Board Chairman Andrew Rand, and after meeting with Mr. Rand, he agreed with me that we needed to do something right away, and Mr. Rand challenged his staff over there to come up with some ideas to help out right away. My third phone call was actually with County Board Member from the 15th District, Steve Riker. After meeting with Steve a couple times also, we decided to have some meetings and bring a lot of people to the table so we can really work out a deal and make a good decision for all, all the people. Fourth meeting was actually with our Finance Director Jim Scrogging. Jim actually, per our conversation, came up with a way, a creative way to finance this project. In the fifth meeting, finally, with, like I just said, was, was Mr. Riker and staff from the county and the city, and we just worked out the details. Now, the 5th District really is the engine for the city, in my opinion. Every engine needs to tune up once in a while or needs a change, oil change, and this is going to go a long way for the people of the 5th District. I mean, we generate 35% to 40% of all revenues for the general fund through property taxes and sales taxes, and we don't have a lot to show as far as return on investment in the 5th District. This project is very important. It will create good prevailing wage jobs, good union jobs. We don't need to raise any taxes for this project. No county, city, bridge, road projects are compromised or delayed by this project. This is a classic example of two governed bodies coming together for the benefit of our taxpayers, our constituent. Before I ask the city manager to take us to the details of this project, I move to approve item 18-063.
Seconded by Councilmember Ruck Regal. Seconded by Councilmember Reckel. Councilman Seer.
If I can say one more comment, Mr. Mayor. Also forgot through the I worked also through homeowner association this project, and Carol is here tonight. I want to recognize Carol Hornicle that helped me also contact a lot of homeowner, president in the association, to really make everybody aware of it. So thank you, Carol, for your work also.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The 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 details of this transaction are somewhat lengthy, but the genesis for it is that if, right now, we've had actually in place for over fifty years an agreement with the county that if there is a road that is going to be transferred from the county to the city, that both the city and the county will split the cost of rebuilding that road up to the city standards, and then the road would be turned over. And that goes back to the to the nineteen sixty-six agreement that we have in place to do that. So in this process, what we talked about doing was that we would have a jurisdictional transfer of this road from the outset, and that was done for for speed purposes. The city would be the lead agency working to design the intersection. We'll use a design-build process to do so. This will allow us to meet the time constraints to try and get this road constructed, or at least substantially constructed, by the end of the year. We did talk about looking at a roundabout as a potential design with a focus on pedestrian safety. The city is going to select the vendors for the project with the county participating in that selection process. We would hold all of the contracts. The county is going to fund one hundred percent of the cost. There is an attached, as part of this approval, there is an intergovernmental agreement that's included with that, in which, as the county would provide us with the funds and pay for the the vendors, we would then be obligated to pay them back fifty percent of the project cost. The loan would have a three percent interest rate, and it would be amortized over ten years, with the city only paying interest on the first five years, and then we would have our five years of of payments. That first payment would be due in two thousand and nineteen, and it would there would be no penalty if the city were to pay that loan off early. The intent behind this, and we we actually had a meeting where we began this discussion too, is that we we also work with the the Peoria-Pekin area, urban area transportation system, to ensure that the federal funds that were scheduled for this project in two thousand and twenty-one, that 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 those would remain in place. And we had a meeting last week where we did meet at at PUATs and had that discussion with the policy committee. The technical committee is going to be taking that up, but it will come back for a final approval at the next PUATs Policy Committee meeting. It seemed to to be well-received by all of those that were there. So I think that's the 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 major technical aspects of the deal. As I mentioned, it's memorialized in an intergovernmental agreement, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Seer. Okay, Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I want to commend Councilman Seer for making this such a priority because it is an intersection that I used to drive through frequently when my kids were up school up there, and it's always been one that we get a lot of complaints on. So thank you for your creative work in making this such a priority. And of course, the county for working with the city and Councilman Seer on coming up with this creative solution. I do have a couple of questions. First, I'm glad to hear you say that the roundabout is just a potential plan for this intersection. The way that the council memo read, it looked like it was a done deal. So that leads me to my question. I'm assuming you're going to do this like we've done other major road projects, like the Harvard Road reconstruction in Forest Hill and Mainland University. In the last several years, we have public meetings where residents that live nearby or people that use that road can come in and give input with the design and how the intersection's going to finally end up, whether it's a roundabout or some other kind of intersection.
That's absolutely the case. I'll let Director Reese talk about the process that he's anticipating using.
Thank you. So our our plan is to, very similar to what we did to the pilot project down on Adam Street last year, the design, it's basically contract-at-risk, where we have a a design consultant already on board and a a construction engineer already on board. We have RFPs that we're sending out on the street to hire a contractor, and then we'll use that team to determine what is the the most affordable construction practice and what the intersection looks like. So so the goal is to start off with possibly three alternatives, a very high-level view, and have public meetings, get input from attendees at that meeting, and from an online survey, and narrow down to to options possibly, or maybe we get enough input at that that time that we can get the final option and move forward with design. But but the whole time, it it's an iterative process where we put numbers to it from the contractor, and that allows us to get the the most cost-effective method moving forward. However, I will say that we understand that the intersection's in bad shape right now, so we kind of have a plan in the meantime to try to do some temporary fixes instead of going out there and pothole patching early on. You could possibly see that as early as April, where we can go out and possibly remove the existing pavement and put some sort of temporary surface down that would only stay there. It wouldn't waste money, per se, because by we'd be able to reuse that material in the final design.
That that's very good to hear. I like that approach. I guess then you will come back or let us know what the public meeting plan is and what that schedule will be, so we can make sure we announce it and and then giving people enough lead time to make sure that they're well-attended and we get significant input.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on this item? Councilman Riggenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to thank Councilman Seer for his leadership on this. This really is something that all of us throughout the city have heard complaints about, so we appreciate. You're taking the bull by the horns, and I see County Board Chairman Rand in the audience. We want to thank you for the the willingness to sit down at the table and think a little bit outside the box on this. We've have this group called Metro Peoria that has met through the years on ways that the city and county can work together, and while this didn't go through that channel, I think this shows exactly to our constituents the willingness of both of these bodies to work together for the things that really are the common good for our communities. So thank you to all who made that possible.
Thank you. Chairman Rand, we'd be very welcome to offer an opportunity for you to say a few words. County Board Chairman Andrew Rand.
Twelve-thirty West Boss Avenue, Andrew Rand. Appreciate it very much, Tim. The ability to do this really is because of Metro Peoria. While we didn't run it through that channel, it's because the mayor and Chairman O'Neill a few years ago established Metro Peoria. The important thing I would say, Councilman Seer, but for your leadership, there's a couple of other folks, Carol Hornicle and Dick in the front row here, have led really a large community of neighbors and also several business owners who have kept this issue at the top of my mind for for some time. But I do appreciate the fact that your community in the fifth district has been suffering tremendously for some time, and the best part of this arrangement is with Scott Reese, through the intergovernmental agreement heading up the design-build, we not only lower the cost, because we have a twenty percent I dot charge when the county does it, you can in-house your engineering costs for a much more, in a much more cost-effective way, and you can begin to build the project as you're tearing out the old bet, so that utility of design-build is quicker and more economical, and Scott is very tuned to taking neighborhood input on design and consequences during construction. So we're thrilled that he's doing it. But I wanted to point those two things out to the body, and I appreciate the chance to work with all of you, and thank you for your leadership, Councilman Seer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Any further discussion on this? We do have a motion in a second. I'd like to add my appreciation to Councilman Seer for his time and effort to finally get this resolved, and I know in addition to the the neighborhood residents that live in that area, the business owners in that area, especially the car dealers that contribute significant sales tax back to the city, are are very appreciative as well. We do have a motion in a second. If there is no further discussion, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Eighteen dash oh sixty-four is the ordinance reserving the private activity bond volume cap.
Councilwoman Agassim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pulled this so that we could get more information about what this actually represents, what this money can be used for, and because it's a revenue bond, what revenue streams we would be using to repay the bond.
Thank you. I'd like to to turn the the floor over to Dr. McKnight, who can help to answer some of those questions.
Okay, I'll provide a high-level overview tonight on private activity bonds. So basically, private activity bonds, this is a Illinois state allocation, and it's used for development traditionally for manufacturing. So that's why there's the term industrial revenue bonds. So it can be allocated to manufacturing companies to finance specific costs to a project. It also can be used for multifamily rental housing, but there is some criteria for that type of development. So it has to be, if it's multifamily rental housing, it's when at least twenty percent of the units are rented to income fifty percent in median income or below, or forty percent of the units are rented to people with income of sixty percent of less or medium income. So the benefits, why private activity bonds? The benefit is that the bondholders, their the interest on the bonds are tax-exempt. So that's that's one benefit there. It also provides long-term financing at a low interest rate that is usually below prime, and it also can provide financing to up to a hundred percent of the the project cost. So there has to be a minimum investment threshold of at least one point five million dollars. So we have this as in our toolbox of incentives and programs in economic development. So we haven't had, and and Ross can comment on this, because economic development wasn't community development years ago, but it's it's probably been at least fifteen years since private activity bonds have been actually used for a manufacturing project or a multifamily project as as a result of that as well. So once the funds are the bonds are allocated to the city of Peoria, we have up until like November to reserve the funds for a project. If not, we get the option to cede the bonds to the city of Aurora for, it's called the Illinois Assist Down Payment Assistance Program. And so that program is down payment assistance up to three percent of the mortgage loan for down payment assistance. And so this past year was a record year for that. The the private activity bonds assisted one hundred and ninety-three homes in Peoria and leveraging the private investment of housing loans, I have that, of, let's see, seventeen million eight hundred and thirty-six thousand six hundred and nine dollars. So so the feedback that we've been getting from developers and for manufacturing companies, this option is always offered when we have our larger-scale projects that meet these thresholds. But what some of the feedback that we've been receiving is why they don't go ahead with the private activity bonds is that the developer has to facilitate and and finance the entire bond transaction. So the the city, we issue the bond to essentially a commercial lending institution or an investment firm, but it is up to the developer or the project owner, one, to meet the financial criteria for a bond, and they have to secure a letter of credit to the city before we even start that conversation. And then they have to secure the bond counsel. So there's there's a fee and a cost and time to that. The bond counsel does a feasibility of the use of the bonds. They issue a legal opinion, and and usually this bond counsel has to be nationally recognized and be and be an expert in issuing these opinions in order to attract the investors to these lending institutions. So in addition to that, they have to secure a bond trustee and a bond underwriter. So as developers look at how they're leveraging their projects, as we know, there's various financial options. There's private equity, there's investor equity, there's maybe grants, other loans, other traditional debt services, and so this is this is another resource that they have to use for development projects. So again, and then there's an administrative fee with the city also to even issue the bond to the commercial lender. So that's that's the the brief summary of how private activity bonds work and and how we have been utilizing the bonds since since I've been involved and since Ross is also has been involved in this.
Mr. Manager.
The IRS code gives every municipality in the country a hundred and five dollars per person as part of the private activity bond volume cap. So that's what we have. We have, for our population of over a hundred and fifteen thousand people, we have a hundred and five dollars per person, so that's the the twelve million dollars, I think, that we were we were looking at. So we can issue this debt on behalf of a private entity in order to to spur industrial development, but as as Dr. McKnight said, there's a there's some challenges with doing it, and we haven't had much success with it. So really, all this resolution in front of you tonight does is reserve that that cap for the future if we need it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Agassim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for that explanation, Dr. Knight. That was excellent. So in exchange for offering this tool from your toolbox, are there any qualifications beyond what you've mentioned as far as building requirements? Could somebody come in and say, I'm going to put up a metal building that's four stories tall and house a hundred people, and we would have no ability to require more than the metal building at this point?
Well, well, I would say not formally as part of the bond application, but absolutely any city of Peoria incentive empowers us to look at the design and hold them accountable to our design standards, and any input, you know, from our community, from our elected officials. It definitely gives us leverage for that design, and we we utilize that. That is our leverage for that.
Okay, so thank you for that. So since we have no design standards, and we typically rely on the goodwill of the developers that would bring a project forward, could we amend this agenda item to say we can all agree that this is a good idea, the twelve million dollars, you know, we should all adopt this ordinance, with a caveat that with the recent discussion about design standards that are going to be coming forward, that that would have to be part of the review process, or they would have to comply with any design standards that we come up with between now and when are the whenever the projects come forward? Because what I'm concerned about is that you might have someone in the pipeline already that has been just anticipating that there won't be too much that we require other than the life safety standards that all developers have to meet with the international and existing building codes, but we don't have, I mean, the answer to my question was yes. They could put up a four-story metal building, and we really They could put up a four-story metal building, and we really wouldn't have much control. I, I mean, it would be, you know, it would be an interesting challenge, and we've seen it in the city before. So I bring this to everyone's attention just for that reason, and maybe the city manager or our council could weigh in so that, you know, we tighten this up just a little bit.
Mr. Manager.
Well, I, I think that any development that would come forward would, would have to go through the, the development review process in, in the community development side. And so I guess, I mean, this is, this specific item is just reserving that, that bond volume cap. I don't, if, if we need to bring something back in a week that says that any development that is, hasn't been submitted yet, I guess we'd have to look at that and see from a community development standpoint. If we want to hold them to a design standard we may be working on over the course of this year as it goes forward. You know, I, I just don't know if it's germane specifically to this resolution, but it, it is something that if that's the direction council wants to go, we, we can certainly craft something that would allow us to do that.
Well, when I talked to you earlier today, I was told that there is no one that's been promised this money. It hasn't been suggested. This is, you know, as far as I could tell, it was untapped, an untapped resource. It would seem to me that now with this council discussion, and if anyone else would like to weigh in, but I think that we would be, it would behoove us to recognize that we have to do something about some of the projects that have come forward, and they've been largely a disappointment in some cases.
Mr. Manager, unless this is really time-sensitive, maybe we can just bring this back for two weeks, have that discussion that Councilwoman Aikerson mentioned, and we can...
Actually, it is time-sensitive. I have to reserve this by the end of the month, so...
So our next...
I would move to, I would move to approve this with the understanding that we've, you know, we haven't heard from any of the other council members, but it has been top of the mind. It was in our strategic plan. It is something that community development is working on, and I think everyone understands the importance of tightening this up.
Okay. Keep in mind, we do have one more meeting before the end of the month. But we do have a motion to approve in a second by a council member more. Okay? Discussion. Councilmember Montalongo.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of questions as well. First of all, and I agree with Councilwoman Aikerson's comments with that here. So if, and when we vote on this tonight here, how soon would the funds be available for, for someone to have a, a loan?
Well, I have to officially reserve it first, so we'll do that... Yeah, and, and I have to send it to the governor's office. So once their office receives it, and, I mean, they, they don't send a letter of approval. It's just that they, if, we've done our part, our due diligence in reserving it. So any project that comes along, I mean, we can, I mean, they'll have to start the process, and, and it should be available.
So is, does that mean as soon as after you send the letter, then it's available?
Well, I have to reserve it first, so it has to reach the governor's desk that we are reserving it. So once they receive it, the answer is yes. We can start, the, the bonds are available.
When would that date be?
Well, once council approves the reservation of the ordinance, the next day, I usually send it to the governor's office.
Funds would become available because we would still have to have a project. The project would have to come forward. They would have to retain their bond council. We would have to concur with it. We would have to bring it back to you to, to pass a bond inducement ordinance, and you would come back and then finally adopt a final ordinance with this. So it would be several months before anyone that was interested in using these funds were able to, to actually receive any, any proceeds from them.
So by then, we'll probably have these design standards and probably policy in place. I guess that's a question that I have. I don't know who that goes to, you or Ross.
That's probably a question that's directed towards the community development director in terms of how long it will take to, to work through the design standards discussion.
The chances of us having design standards in place in two or three months probably aren't very likely. Director Black.
So to, we can bring for discussion purposes in something similar, in a similar format to a policy discussion to council on design standards relatively quickly. And by relatively quickly, I would say within the next six weeks. The, the adoption really depends upon how we, how the council wants to adopt the design standards and which design standards the council wants to adopt. If they become part of the Unified Development Code, part of the zoning ordinance, then they have to go through the public hearing process, and they have to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission. If they are, so that, that's a minimum of forty-five days before it comes back to the city council as a first reading. If the council were to have design standards as a standalone section of the city code that was not part of the zoning regulations, then it wouldn't necessarily have to go through that public hearing process, so it could come back to council a little bit earlier. But I think, you know, probably late summer for the adoption of some type of, of standards.
I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this item? We have a motion to second to approve. Okay. Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, before you go to the next one, I was given a note by our communications director that it seems that we're encountering some audio problems on public access for people with Comcast. It seems that the audio is very low or nonexistent. And if it's nonexistent, they're not going to hear this message anyway. But they, they do have a tech from Comcast that's working on this, and they, if people can hear this, but the volume's very low, they're welcome to live-stream it off the website or listen on WCBU. Madam Clerk.
Eighteen dash oh forty-nine is the ordinance amending Appendix A relating to multi-story mini storage uses.
I believe this was Councilwoman Jensen pulled this.
I just had a couple of questions about this. I guess I'm wondering if the, because it, I couldn't tell from the text. All I have is this chart that says it's going to be permitted use in a commercial district if you get a special use. Do we have multiple, multi-story mini storage, storage units defined in the code? That's not part of what's being proposed, correct?
Councilwoman, it's, what's being proposed is that it become a special use, not, not a permitted use in the C1 district. And we have standards that are associated with this particular use in a C1 district.
I guess what are those standards?
The standards... But there's, there's a whole list of them. I'm happy to read them if the council would like. So no electrical power supply shall be accessible to the renters, leases of the storage units, with the exception of lighting fixtures and climate control. Commercial wholesale or retail sales, flea markets, or peddling, or miscellaneous or garage sales are prohibited. However, once a month, the management of the self-storage mini warehouse may conduct a one-day auction in accordance with State of Illinois regulations. The servicing, repair, or fabrication of motor vehicles, boats, trailers, lawnmowers, appliances, or other similar equipment is prohibited. The operation of a transfer and storage business is prohibited. The operation of power tools, spray painting equipment, table saws, compressors, welding equipment, kilns, or other similar equipment except for the need of maintenance is prohibited. Any activity that is noxious or offensive because of odors, dust, noise, fumes, or vibrations are prohibited. The storage of hazardous chemicals, flammable liquids, or combustible and explosive materials are prohibited. And the habitation of storage units by humans or animals is prohibited. And the warehouse building itself shall be a minimum of two stories. All storage units shall be accessed internally. External doors to individual units shall not be permitted. And one consolidated loading area is permitted on the rear or the side of the building. And the storage of boats, RVs, or other similar vehicles may be permitted in accordance with the outdoor storage and display regulations, which basically requires them to be screened from public view.
Okay, thank, thank you, Director Russ. One of those standards that you mentioned, you said there's a minimum of two stories for these types of developments? Is there a limit on how, on the number of stories? Because what I'm getting at, I don't... I mean, you just said there was a minimum, but is there a maximum?
The, the maximum would be set by the base requirements of the zoning district. So if the zoning district allowed buildings to be forty-five feet tall, then however many units you could get in a forty-five-foot-tall building would be all you could have.
So I'm just, how many stories is like forty-five feet high? I'm just trying to get an understanding of what we're, if we approve this, what, what might be allowed in different districts.
I would say for the purpose of a storage unit, you probably wouldn't be looking at more than three stories just because the, the ceiling of the storage unit would have to be tall enough to make it useful as a storage unit. And, and I, I would remind the council that it's a, it's always a special use. And so the, the council, by conditioning any approval, can also say that the building is too, the proposed building is too tall for this particular part of town regardless of what the underlying base zoning requirement is. Conversely, the council could also provide a waiver to build a tall, a building that's taller than what the base district allows.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Montalongo.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'm very supportive of this project, and there are a few questions that I have for the developer, some last-minute questions here, and I want to defer this to our, to our next meeting.
Okay. Motion to defer seconded by Councilmember Turner. Discussion on the deferral. Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Eighteen dash oh sixty-five is the ordinance approving a special use at forty-four hundred North Brandywine Drive.
Thank you. Councilman Montalongo.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll, this goes along with forty-nine, and I'll be asking for a deferral till our next meeting as well.
Thank you. Discussion on the deferral. We have a second by Councilmember Turner. Seeing none, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Regular Business eighteen dash oh seven oh is a request to receive and file a presentation by Peoria Public Works Department for the stormwater utility.
Thank you. Director Reese.
Thank you. I just wanted to do a, a brief overview. I know there's been a number of questions about the stormwater utility as we get closer to the, the actual billing date. Wanted to walk through what we have done in the past, and then kind of what our, our plan is moving forward. So first, I wanted to talk about, in 2015, we had the One Water Committee. At, at that point, we had our consultant, which is Samanell, who would meet with each council member that was on the council at that point, one-on-one, to walk through the wet weather issues. We created a wet weather book that, that we have used as a guideline moving through this process, formed the committee, and had the website created, and had a number of public meetings. Into 2016, we started creating training materials. We had training sessions specifically with city staff on how to, to go out into the public and talk about this if they were asked questions about it. We held the City Fest public event and with the Adams Street Pilot Project, where we had a number of people come down, and we use that as an opportunity to reach out to the public and people that might not know about the stormwater utility as it, it moved forward. And then also, it started, it showed up for the first time on the online budget challenge that has been taken by the citizens as we've gone through the budget process. And continuous things we've done since 2015, as anytime businesses or organizations ask us to come out and meet with them, we attend a meeting and walk through the, the wet weather needs and the CSO and the stormwater utility. We've been doing social media posts as much as possible, and then also just trying to get a grassroots effort out there where, where people are talking about it and knowing that it's coming forward. And this was just to highlight a, a number of the, the posts either on the news programs or the Journal Star, or at Issue with H. Wayne Wilson, where we, we've been on there. I think I've been on there twice, talking about the stormwater utility and the CSO issue as it's facing us. Into 2017, we're, we continued our meetings with businesses. Samanell met with the new council members at that point. We updated our materials. And then we were able to, during the December, it passed as part of the, the budget for 2018 and 2019. This was just an overview of kind of where we, all the outreach that has taken place. There were seven One Water meetings. We, we've had over eleven articles in the Journal Star written about it, including a, a meeting with the editorial board back in 2015. We reached out to the twenty-five top-rate payers and offered one-on-one sessions to, to discuss with them what was coming forward. Had fifty-two community group meetings. City Fest had over fifteen hundred attendees that we reached out. And really, through all these meetings, we've had a little over twenty-four hundred people that have had somewhat of a one-on-one interaction with city staff to discuss the stormwater utility. This was just some examples of some of the, the residential groups that, that have reached out to us that over the past three years that we have gone and had, given the presentation to and talked through both the CSO and the stormwater utility. These are some of the associations that we have done, and the businesses that we have met one-on-one with and talked through concerns and discussed with them how the stormwater utility will work. Really, what, what we, the whole goal of the stormwater utility is we researched similar cities. It's something that Bloomington and Normal have, Champaign-Urbana have it. Morton has it, is our closest neighbor. Morton's had it for fifteen years. Eureka, it was probably the most recent example of a town near us that has actually passed a stormwater utility and has one in place. We tried to take input from the residents, and that's one thing that the One Water Committee walked through. It's actually their recommendation. They, they wanted us to have higher fees, I guess, than what we actually, or their recommendation was for higher amount of work each year being done than our, our final recommendation. I think they were at twelve million dollars a year that they thought we needed to invest in stormwater, stormwater or wet weather issues. And we backed that down to eight million dollars on our final recommendation. Our, our big thing is, and this was the, the key point as we walked through the One Water Committee, is that we, we wanted it to be equitable for everybody in the city. And so it's really based on usage. It's, it passes that rational nexus that the, the utility is tied to how much you use it. And that's why we use the impervious area method. There's, there's no different rate for residential versus commercial. It's all one rate because you, they all use the system the same amount. But we also wanted to encourage behavioral change. But we also wanted to encourage behavioral change. And so that's where the credits and grants come in for responsible actions to actually help us alleviate some of our wet weather issues. We feel it's easy to understand how the bill is generated, and that's what we're trying to get the message out about. And then I think that it's also, since it is a utility and it does pass that rational nexus for fair and equitable, it is upheld to Illinois legal challenges. Rock Island was one of the first communities that was challenged in court, and it was the Supreme Court upheld that a stormwater utility is a, is a real thing, and it is a viable utility company. So as we look forward for this year, kind of laying outline of what our plan is, we're going to bring back the credit and incentive manual to council on March 27th, our next council meeting. We're going to do public mailers, and I apologize, that shouldn't say "sample bill" the first week of July. That should say, it should be the real bill, starting the first week in July. And we're still working through the logistics of what that's going to look like. We're having some discussions with the sanitary district about possibly billing with them, and just how we would do that. And then there's 47,000 resident or properties in Peoria, so we're looking at billing quarterly and how we roll that out versus mailing out 47,000 at one time and then having an influx in a hurry, just trying to make that so it's equalizing that workload over time. But we will do a stormwater overview the first week in May, and the plan of that is to have a picture or a screen capture of what a sample bill would look like, not actually a sample bill. One thing we've learned in the past is if we send out sample bills, people pay them. And we don't want that until we actually are ready to bill for the system. And so we will be sending out that overview. We're going to have a stormwater utility website launch that we're still working on in early May. The goal for that is that somebody could possibly type in their address, it would pull up their property, they would see what their bill would be and how much impervious area they have, so that people can get on there and actually see it eventually. And this might be pie in the sky, but it's our goal is to also have that as a portal where they could pay their bill and log in online and actually pay their bill if they choose to do so. And then I think we're always trying to do community and outreach and business meetings. Anytime anybody reaches out to us, there's somebody on our, our staff that's willing to come out and meet with them and talk through the issues with them. And I try to make that as brief as I could.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Reese? Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions. Number one, what's the backlog, Mr. Reese?
In stormwater issues, we have about seventeen and a half million dollars worth of backlog projects.
Seventeen and a half million dollars. If someone would write to your check tonight for seventeen and a half million dollars, how long, if money was no issue, no problem, how long would it take to fix all our problems?
If we had, if we had today, if we had seventeen and a half million dollars, I think it would take us, logistically, to get that work out the door, we'd be looking at a year and a half to two years to complete all the work.
Two years, and why is that?
Just logistical, just manpower and staff to put together the projects and get them out the door.
The cost of this work for the next two years, how much would it go up?
I didn't catch this question.
You know, I mean, is it still going to be seventeen and a half million dollars two years from now, or will the cost go up in the future?
So we're seeing construction, if we did nothing and no more problems arose, if the system stayed stagnant to the way it is today, you'd probably see a 3% increase a year, just based on the, the price of material and labor increases. But what we are seeing is, so we have this list of projects that we address each year, and we rate them, basically, are they life safety issues all the way down to nuisances? And each year, life safety issues come up to the top, and it pushes nuisance problems down. And so our list grows each year from what we're seeing as the system ages, just because we haven't been able to invest in it in the recent years.
The problem I have, I know we've voted on this already, but inflation, you said 3%, this year will raise about $4 million, next year about $8 million, that's $12 million. Year three will be $10 million because we've got a $1 increase. So inflation, we say it's 3%, but we're going to increase the rate 33% two years from now, and four years from now, another 33%, which total, four years from now, increases will be 66%. That's just a lot of money. And I know we voted for this already, but I think we need to have more discussion, because if we have a $17 million backlog, my calculation within a couple, year and a half, I mean, we'll be right back on track. I need, I think the public need to know, understand why the excess money would go. And I know the answer is a CSO, but I think we need a lot more discussions about, especially these increase, because people are, we all know, people are complaining a lot right now because it's come as a surprise. So to have a 66% increase four years from now, it's just a lot. I mean, I'd like to have more discussion about these increases. Second point I want to make, in your slide, you were talking about reaching a couple thousand people. I feel sorry to bring that up again, but you know, we're reaching 2% or less of our resident. We need to do a better job. I mean, we need some other, and I'm not a marketing guru, but I mean, we need to bring some expert and find out how we can get the word out to all these very, very important projects, because in my mind, we did the same thing with the budget, you know? The budget, we, we reached by one and a half to 2%. And there's another one I can't think of, we had the same amount of money, but it seems to me like for a third time, we're reaching about 2% of our population. It's just not enough. We need to find a way to reach, you know, 10, 20, 50, 100% eventually. So just, and I know it's not, I just want to bring that up to your attention, and I know it's not probably your department, but I just want to make a point of it. And the last thing is this credit manual. In the 5th District, I'm getting so many phone calls, especially from businesses, that they feel they were blindsided, obviously by this fee. They would like to have some input, you know, businesses and constituent probably like to have some input, if possible, for the credit manual. And I don't know if that's possible, especially if you're coming back, you know, two weeks from now, but I just wanted to put on the table in front of you. I'm getting phone calls where people would like to have a say in the, how we develop this credit manual. Thank you very much.
Did you want to respond to that, Council, Mr. Reese?
Yeah, I think we're always willing for comment on the credit manual. We've, we've had a draft manual out online since the budget in December, early November. I think we believe, I believe we put it out there. And I would say if anybody has comments, please email me, or, and we, I can distribute it to staff, and we could take a look at those comments, and we could do, if they do it before, in the next week or so, we can try to do a disposition of those comments as we bring back the manual to, to council. And I don't know that we necessarily have to have a final version of it approved next week. I don't know that we're, we're in two weeks from now. We're willing to take comments back from council and tweak it and try to get something down. Our goal was just to have something in place by May so that people could start preparing before they started incurring this cost, because there will be some time where we have to generate forms, and they have to submit them in to be eligible for credits, just for the administration part, so, part of it.
Director Reese, I would say on behalf of the council, we should not plan on having this finalized there at our next meeting. That way, we can make sure that we do get plenty of input, not just from council members, but from business owners and constituents. So that will not be a final on the 27th, it'll be after that. Thank you. I had Councilmember Jensen next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Director Reese, for bringing this forward at this meeting, because I like, Councilman Seer, I've been getting a lot of calls and emails about this, and I also have been bombarding Director Reese and City Manager Urick with questions. As a follow-up to the discussion about this, the 17.5 million of backlog projects, that's approximately 400 projects, is that right?
Yes, it's a little over 400.
And then the plan is to spend about 3.5 million a year on those backlog projects, is that right?
Yeah, it's, it's kind of a mixture. It's some of those backlog of projects, and then what we're also doing is using it to extend some of our infrastructure projects. So what we see is probably 30 to 40% of a road project is directly attributed to stormwater costs. So part of the plan, that some of the funding for Western Avenue, for example, is planned to come from the stormwater utility, because it's, a large portion of that project is directly attributed to the, the stormwater costs. And what that does is allow the dollars that the council passed a couple years ago, or 2015, for infrastructure to actually address the pavement issues and the sidewalk issues. And so we'll make those dollars go further if we're able to subsidize that with stormwater dollars.
So just to make it simple for people that aren't as familiar with all these projects, we'd be spending a portion of the money on the backlog, and then every year, we'd also be doing current planned road projects and water and sewer projects with this money that we'll be raising?
Yes.
Can you, can you talk about the comparable rates? I know the chart that you provided to us during the budget meeting shows that, I mean, I think they go anywhere from a monthly rate per ERU of 3.71 to 9.72 in similar communities. Can you talk about how that compares to what we've approved here?
So we're probably closer to the, the 9.71 rate, because our, we're about, I think it's $7.80 a month is our, our average house, and that's what some communities call their, their ERU. Part of the fair and equitable discussion we had was, we wanted to charge per 1,000 feet of impervious area versus using an ERU, because what a lot of communities do, they, they say you're, they figure out what their average house is. So, so we know our average house in Peoria is 2,600 square feet, and then they set their, so that's their ERU, and every residential house is charged for one ERU. So it doesn't matter if you're an 800-square-foot house or a 13,000-square-foot house. You pay that 9.71, and that's what that ERU is. How we're different, and why our average is 7.80 is, it's based off size. So if you're a 1,000-square-foot house in Peoria, you're only going to pay that $3 a month. But if you're a 9,000-square-foot house, you're going to pay $9 a month, if I did, no, not, $27 a month. So it's, and we did that to try to base that off of usage of the system. And then what other communities do is then they, businesses, they charge based off ERUs. So it's basically built down into how many ERU, basically a business would be, if it's 5,200 square feet in Peoria, that would be two ERUs, where we'd be 5.2 billion units, if that makes sense.
So we're using a completely different unit of measurement than all the other communities that have a stormwater utility, right?
Kind of. I mean, we are using, I would say we're not using the ERU method, we're just using, basing it off of square foot of impervious area.
And then just for clarification, because it seems like, even though I tried to clarify this during the budget discussions, every time we discussed this stormwater utility, this is not going to cover the CSO. If we ever reach an agreement with the EPA, we're going to have to find other funding, whether it's we increase these sewer utility rates or we do other things. We're going to have, this is not going to cover what we've approved, is not going to cover our CSO costs.
I believe that was the intention of having the rate increase built into it, so that that would start to cover some of those CSO costs as we've moved forward. And I, I mean, I agree, it'll definitely be a conversation once we have a settlement with the EPA. I don't know that we're going to have a choice, the money's going to have to come from somewhere. And so the, the stormwater utility basically laid the groundwork for how we would pay for some of that.
Okay. But I, and I hate to beat a dead horse, but I, I know that I asked the city manager this on more than one occasion when we, during our budget discussions, and I'll ask him again, my understanding, and I think your answer was that we'd have to use lots of different, several different resources to pay for the CSO solution, which I see you nodding your head, but can you explain?
It's absolutely correct. I mean, we're, we're looking at a, at a federal unfunded mandate that could be 200 to 300 million dollars. It's not just going to come from, you know, we, we would probably look at the sewer rates that we have, and, and, you know, that's in the discussions that we've had with the, the federal government, they, they recognize that sewer rates will probably go up for everyone in the community, and they also recognize that having a stormwater utility in place is another way to tackle this issue.
Mentioned other, we're probably going to have to look at other revenue generating sources, whether it's property taxes or other things to pay for it, if, if we ever reach an agreement on a solution and move forward with it.
I think that, that it would likely be that we would focus on the stormwater utility and the sewer rates before we would look at any other revenue stream at this point in time. I would focus on those two to see if we could, we could live within those two, because they're directly tied back to managing stormwater and managing the sewer systems that we have.
So what we've approved so far, is that going to cover, I mean, some of the costs? And if so?
It, it will establish a baseline that will allow us to, to set aside future funds that are collected for addressing these issues. But if we sign a consent decree with the federal government, and after six months of waiting, that consent decree goes into effect, it is likely that we'll start by issuing bonds in order to do the work. Those bonds will have to be paid back by higher sewer rates. That's likely the approach that we would take in order to be able to, to pay for just the sheer volume of work that it's going to take to, to address the mandate from the federal government.
Okay. Thank you.
I had Councilmember Montalongo, and then Councilmember Graham.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Questions for, for Director Reese? And I know we struggled to get the word out to, to the businesses, and most of them, I would say most business owners that own property did not know the amounts that they were going to be paying. And we had a chance to have a meeting not too long ago with your Director Reese, with some of the car dealers and hospitality businesses, those who probably have significant amount of property. And their biggest concern was that there was already an investment made on their part for water detention, water retention-type systems already made, and, and the question is, why are we going to be paying again? And, you know, they had a hard time understanding that, and as well, what the dollar amounts were, and a lot of them just finding out for the first time. And I, I would say most of the business people that, that were there were not newbies, but I think experienced business people. So this was a very shocking moment for them to find out what those amounts were. In addition to that, you know, the credit amounts were kind of up in the air, and I think we need to be a little bit more concrete with that. And, you know, I'm, for one, if we're going to be passing some policy here in the near future, I think we need to consider that they would have a 100% credit if they've already made an investment in, in being able to capture their own water on their property, then why should they be paying again? Those, those are my thoughts on it as well. The other part of it, too, is, as you just spoke about, using some of these dollars for, for other road projects, I'm like, we could technically say that every road in Peoria has, could have water issues. And so I find it that we, we could be just moving money from one pocket to the other pocket to pay for road projects that has nothing to do with water, the real water issues that are going on in, in perhaps 5th District, 4th District, because we were trying to build that, that seems to be some of the areas that have some of the water issues that we're trying to get our arms around besides the CSO, and that's, that's problematic. So one of the things that I did ask for Mr. City Managers to have a, another public meeting with, with the businesses so that they could come and get a chance to hear, and hopefully they can get their amounts calculated for them, and understand what that credit amount is going to be given back to them. And I still left the, the one meeting not really understanding how the, the credit was going to work. So, yeah, I guess that's, that's my, my two cents on it, and I, you know, will probably work with Councilman Seer on some language here on maybe making an amendment for, for policy for- an amendment for policy for some of those businesses. Thank you.
Councilmember Grab.
He covered my area.
Okay, thank you. I'm not seeing any further discussion on this update. A motion to receive and file would be in order. Councilmember Seer, seconded by Councilmember Euler. If there's no further discussion, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
We're at unfinished business 18-038 is a request to approve $400,000 in HUD home funds to Habitat for Humanity Greater Peoria Area for the construction of four new affordable single-family owner-occupied homes located in the 1,110 blocks of Northeast Madison and Monroe.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I first would like to move for approval with comment on the other side.
Seconded by Councilmember Turner. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you. As you are aware, this is yet another project coming forward by humanity, Habitat for Humanity. I see the executive director, Leanne Schmickdahl, is here. Thank you for being here. If you've seen these projects throughout the years, you've known that they have come into the First District particularly and have really changed the look of the areas that they've come into. They've taken homes and improved them. A lot of homes are torn down. They're able to take some homes and improve them and bring in homeownership. In places where there have been vacant lots or the home is severely in bad shape, they've been able to take those vacant lots and derelict homes and convert them to properties that have, are beautiful and now have homeowners living in there. The beauty, I don't have to tell me any of you around the horseshoe, that the beauty of this project is that folks who are invested in wanting to live in one of these homes puts time into the building of other homes. You also know that their chairperson, Mr. Joseph, is very active, very passionate about what he's doing in this area. I thank him for what he's done for the First District and what he continues to do for his leadership in the development of projects and has a vision for bringing the Near North Valley back to its former prominence. So having said that, I understand that there may be some administrative things that need to be done on the other side of this project before these funds are distributed, which is fine. Everybody understands that. And Mr. Joseph understands that there are some administrative things that need to happen. But I would like for your support of approving these funds, which won't be released to anybody until all of the administrative processes are complete, as an indication that not only are we willing to assist Habitat for Humanity with what they're trying to do for the city of Peoria and the First District specifically, but also as your shore of support for them to continue to do what they're doing. If you have taken the time to call Mr. Joseph or anybody connected to Habitat for Humanity, Leanne, you will have found someone who is readily available, will take you out to view the properties, will meet with you anytime, anyplace, anyday, and is very transparent in how they are working through this process. So having said that, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Further comments? Councilmember Akison.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two weeks ago, I asked to have this item deferred so that we could get more complete information and so that the listening audience understands Habitat for Humanity is requesting 80% of our home funds, an amount of the $400,000. And luckily for the First District, they have identified the North Valley as their area of investment, and they have been impressively responsive to my questions and issues that I've raised. But in return, I think that we have to be equally committed to them. I think that we have to ensure that Habitat's investment is supported by traditional planning principles and that we will give them the code enforcement support that they need, a cooperative effort between community development and the police department. And I think that we also must review the process in the future. This $400,000 of taxpayer federal funds will yield four homes, and we must make certain that the investment that we make yields the results that we are anticipating. So to that extent, I'd like to offer a friendly amendment to this request for approval. I'd like to defer the approval of the funds until the administrative details will definitely get nailed down. They are not as easy as they seem. And have Habitat go ahead and proceed with Section 106 of the historic review process so that they don't lose time. I think that Director Black will bring back a plan to address the code enforcement issues. And I think that we need a resolution to the one property at 1031 that has no basement and has no garage. And the reason that's important is that the families that go into these homes have to be set up for success, and largely they are. But in this particular case, there's no place for them to put a lawnmower. There's no place for them to put their bicycles or any other, and probably primarily important, no place for their trash cans. It's a very visible lot. It is surrounded by blight. The code enforcement issues have to be addressed. And I think Habitat deserves the focus and the attention and for their benefit, the scrutiny of a process that's in place that can address these. So I would move not to approve the funding. I would, a friendly amendment to Councilwoman Moore's request for approval to say they should go ahead with their process. And I've discussed this with Director Black, and he thinks that's perfectly acceptable. And that would give them time to work out this issue of what do they do with their garbage cans? What do they do with the lawnmower? Because at this point, it's just a house on a very small lot.
Councilmember Moore.
Mr. Mayor, I would reject that amendment proposal. I would point you to River West Properties that have been there, oh, more than 15 years now. And the newer properties have been there about seven or eight years. They don't have garages. They don't have basements. They have sheds that they place their outdoor items inside. I'm sure there are many folks who are listening here who don't have garages or basements and utilize sheds to do those things. You wouldn't put a lawnmower in a basement anyway. But, so no, sir, I cannot accept that amendment because this is an award-winning developer in Mr. Joseph's. And I, and people are referred to him to be shown the correct way to build these types of properties. And so I would decline that. Thank you.
Councilwoman Akison.
Okay. So just so everyone's clear, I'm not sure if anyone has been to this location, there is no shed proposed on this plan. And I just want to be absolutely certain that if a shed is proposed, that there's space for that on this particular location. And I understand Councilwoman Moore's points, that not everyone has basements, not everyone has garages. But in this particular case, it's not nailed down. And I just think that it's not going to delay the project. But it will give, I mean, for the city council to accept something that's not complete, this is not the way it normally comes through. Typically, all these issues are addressed, the public comment, the historic process unfolds, and then we approve it. But now, this way, we're approving the funding, and then we're crossing our fingers to make sure everything happens. And this is no way a reflection on whether Habitat has been responsive. They have been incredibly responsive. And I'm, therefore, I think that this is incumbent on us to make sure that we ensure that some of these other issues have been nailed down because, especially around this House, it's a concern.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you. I'm very thankful that Mr. Joseph is listening or watching somewhere because he has texted me that the House has a basement and a garage. If you would like for Executive Director Leanne Schmickdahl to come up and address that, this is what the developer is indicating.
Hi, I'm Leanne Schmickdahl, Director of Habitat for Humanity. And yes, all of our homes have basements in that area. I think we talked to you about that when you were up at the office the other day. It does have a basement. And after we had submitted the plans, we did realize that the garage was not put on the back, and Mr. Joseph did add a garage that would come out on Morton Street.
Councilmember Moore leaves the floor. The floor.
Thank you. No, that, I just would like for us to move for approval.
Is there further discussion on this item? Seeing no lights, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your ballots. Councilwoman Akison.
I would like Director Black to weigh in on this because we were at the property today, and I'm not, it doesn't appear to me that there's any room for a garage. Now, you know, I appreciate the fact that Mr. Joseph is listening, and I can see, I mean, we've got the plans right here. There's no basement on this plan. There are on the other ones. It's obvious right here. One, two, three, with garages, with basements, not on this plan.
Thank you, Mayor. Whether there would be room for a garage or not, we'd have to look at the site with a site plan that shows a garage to see if it would fit and if there were setback issues with that particular parcel. Certainly, the diagram that is in the document before the council this evening does not show a garage at that particular property. If there has been a change since this was initially submitted, then, you know, we can certainly accommodate that. And these are obviously not construction documents. These are examples of what could be constructed. But as both Councilwoman Moore and Councilwoman Akison have indicated, there is the Section 106 review process that still has to happen, which will probably end up in, or probably result in some changes to the way these houses look and perhaps even how they are placed on these particular parcels.
So the chair has called the question, and the question is in the hands of the body as we stand right now. So the motion has been seconded, and you may cast your ballots. Motion passes with nine ayes, two nays, voting no. Councilmembers Akison and Grab. Madam Clerk.
18-050 is a communication from the city manager, and the director public works with a request for the following. A is to adopt an ordinance amending the City of Peoria 2018-19 biennial budget relating to the capital fund to recognize the receipt of a private donation through the Downtown Development Corporation and corresponding expenditures for the Riverfront Village Demolition Project in the amount of $1,584,000. And B is to accept the low bid from NE Finch Company and award a construction contract in the amount of $1,584,000 for the base bid of $1,440,000 plus 10% for contingency for the Riverfront Village Demolition Project. We need separate motions and votes, please.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move to approve the low bid, oh, that's the second one. I'd like to move for approval of Item A on 18-050. And to make it clear, and a comment on the other side, I'd like to move for approval first.
Seconded by Councilmember Turner. Councilwoman Moore.
Okay, thank you. And we will have, I would like to have Director Reese address some of the questions. We've had quite a bit of comment, quite a few meetings on this property. And just to make sure that we're clear on what we are approving, there are two pictures attached to the agenda item. One picture, the first item 1.0 on the corner of this document, shows the Riverfront Park with four trees. Okay. The next item, 1.1, shows the Riverfront Park area where the pad is coming down without those trees. Rather, there's additional parking added to that location. That is the one to which I am moving for approval. Director Reese, can you address some of this, please?
Yes. So, and I think the first item is for the budget amendment, and then Item B is for the contract. We've had a lot of discussions in a number of meetings with the Riverfront Association and the Spirit of Peoria. And I think where we are at, our understanding is that, the understanding is that we would keep the parking that is facing Water Street between the clock tower and the river station the way it is today. Keep the trees in place that are there. It's 90-degree parking. And there, we think, or we are trying to, when we demolish the Riverfront Village, that we could keep two lanes of traffic there for traffic to go in either direction between those. With the understanding that as we go through a planning process over the next year for the downtown, for the bridge to Riverplex and Riverfront Parks, that we might come up with something that eliminates that parking. And we would keep that parking until it was funded for the final park completion. And then the other caveat I think to that is if we demolish the Riverfront Village and it undermines that road in any ways, then it might be a different discussion, and we would reach out to those people to see what's reasonable accommodations and what we can keep and what's not able to salvage.
My second motion, I will address the concern that you mentioned about the two-way parking. But what I think it's important to hear is that there has been a lot of meetings that have been held. I've been in a number of them with both the Spirit of Peoria and the Riverfront Association. And as I said to Director Reese, these two organizations bring phenomenal activity to the riverfront. What they provide as far as, speaking first of the Riverfront Market, brings in tons of people who spend lots of money with our city. And my, I've been there a number of times, and I really wanted to try to assist by providing that parking back. And we went back and forth on how we were going to do that. And at the end of the day, it really comes down to geography and the city budget and how we can manage those two. I will say that Director Reese today again reiterated that he could provide services from his department to assist in making sure that the folks who come through for the Riverfront Market, the diagram of where things are, I mean, they've been successful every year. Every year seems like it grows, and more people are attracted to come to be a vendor. And that's what we want, as subsequently, more people are coming to be customers as well. And so I would, I thank you, Director Reese, for indicating, providing your services in your department to make sure that we can, that the Riverfront Association can have the best use of the space that's available at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously, and Councilwoman Moore on Item B.
I'd like a motion to approve the low bid from NE Finch Company in the amount of $1,584,000 for the base bid of $1,404,000 plus 10% contingency for the Riverfront Village Demolition Project, with the understanding that the parking facing Water Street will remain as is in place with two driving lanes connecting the clock tower to the river station parking lot temporarily until a final park design is agreed upon by city council and funded, unless unforeseen circumstances prevent the two driving lanes to... to remain, and then staff will notify the council.
The motion is seconded by Councilmember Ruck Regal. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Eighteen dash oh one eight is a request to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 18 of the Code of the City of Peoria pertaining to massage establishment.
Thank you. Councilmember Grab.
Esquire Lyst, could you please articulate to the council what you're working on still? And then I'll take it from there.
Thank you, Councilmember. What we are trying to do is we're trying to balance the interest of the therapist organizations and associations, as well as the interest of the entities such as the Centers for Prevention of Abuse, who are trying to curb some of the trafficking issues that some of the less reputable massage establishments are involved in. So, it is, the idea is to strike that balance, and we have met with a variety of organizations, as well as the Center for Prevention of Abuse. And I think that we'll be able to do something. I mean, I think everyone has an interest, and we're trying to get at the same goal. It's just striking that balance, which is the difficulty. But I believe that we can strike that balance. But I would ask Councilman Grab that we perhaps defer this for four weeks so that we can do just that.
Yes, and really, what's happening here is we're taking something out of kind of nowhere land into an area where our home rule government has some regulation. And let's not forget why we have this before us. These businesses have been mushrooming, and we want to ensure that the proper balance is struck. However, I am reluctant to defer this past the 10th of April. And I think you did mention one month or so from now, but I'll be very specific, April the 10th. We should have an opportunity by then to involve all the stakeholders, and then this council needs to vote. So, I would move to defer until the April 10 meeting, and I would strenuously urge the city to bring all the stakeholders together, and then have the council make a decision after further dialogue. That's in the spirit of measuring three times and cutting once, but we don't have to measure 3,000 times. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Now, the motion was seconded by Councilmember Sears. Is there further discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Seventeen dash three ninety-six are the appointments and reappointment by Mayor Artist to the Tourism Reserve Fund with a request to concur of Dr. Marwan Spiller, Councilmember Denise Moore, and Councilmember Dennis Sears. And on your desk is a yellow handout that gives the terms.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Motion to approve by Councilman Regenbach, seconded by Councilmember Turner. Is there discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
If there's no further unfinished business?
Do we have any unfinished business still to come before the council? Unfinished? Okay. Seeing none?
Then we would be at new business.
New business to come before the council this evening. New business. Councilman Grab.
Mr. Chairman, I don't see the green model man. Is he here? Director Reese, Public Works Director? If we could fetch him. I'm so interested in seeing the green model, and I was disappointed to see that he did not have his green tie on tonight. Director Reese, certainly Councilor Moore and I are both interested in knowing when the detours will be articulated or published for the public as relates to the reconstruction, thankfully it's here, of the structurally deficient Douglas C. MacArthur Bridge. I noticed that it was cordoned off today. Could you give us a little overview of what's coming, and if this is permanently cordoned off or temporary and then about to be permanent?
We anticipate this to be a temporary situation. It's pre-work of the actual bridge being constructed by Illinois American Water to relocate a water main to get it out of the way of once we actually get into construction. Depending on weather, they think this work will be completed at a two-week window. So, that started today. And then, now that the item has passed council, or we have a contractor, we'll have a pre-con probably in the next week or so. And then I will be able to report back on a more definitive timeline as far as when we see construction, or the bridge demolition actually starting.
Do you envision that it's going to be closed for a couple of weeks while Illinois American Water Company does its thing, and then we're going to reopen? Or are we going to then, depending on weather, just go for it?
It all depends on the contractor's timeline. The longest lead time, and one more reason we needed to get it under contract soon, was the bridge beams themselves are pre-cast off-site, and there's usually a long lead time for those to come in. So, we have to get those shop drawings and approved. What I don't want to happen is that we tear down the bridge and do all the removal, and then disappear for two months while we're waiting for bridge beams to show up, and no activities happening on there. So, that's a discussion we need to have with the contractor to make sure that they time it to where we're not closing that road until we absolutely have to, so that we can have continuous work going on. And I just, I don't have a, I apologize, I don't have a solid answer until we have that meeting with them and talk, and walk through that schedule. But there is a possibility that we would open the road back up after the water main is placed.
So, there are a lot of variables here that will influence it. And, you know, I know we had problems with the Sheridan Road Bridge being held up, and that was a mess. I think those funds were withheld in Springfield. We do not anticipate any issues of that sort on this project.
With this being a local letting, instead of a state letting, it will not be held up if Springfield does not pass a budget. Those funds are coming directly to us, and so we do not have any concerns of that this time.
Denise and I are happy to tell our constituents that before Thanksgiving, this may very well be largely done and nothing held over until next spring then.
That is our goal.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to that end, Director Reese and I have been talking about the notification that will go out to the community in advance of it being shut down, so well in advance, the school district, people who are impacted by it, Ward Chapel Church that is right there, and the school, Valeska Hinton that's right there. Everybody will know that this is coming before it's shut down. So, thank you for bringing that up, Councilman. Well, no, I mean, I know the two weeks, and that there was notice that went out for these two weeks. But I mean, when it's shut down for several months, that's even going to be more important to know. The item that I had, I wanted to congratulate and welcome to the First District, Run Burgers. I don't know if you've ever been to Run Burgers, Wings on Prospect, but they have opened at 500 Main Street, right across the street from the Pier Marquette. And if you haven't experienced Run Burgers yet, you, I invite everyone to come downtown, experience the downtown and the riverfront, and attend, go out to Run Burgers, a new business in our community. And the reason I am harping on that is because folks think the downtown is dead and that we can't attract new business. And I bring this up to show you that, yes, we can. There's another business that's opening up on Main Street here, and as soon as I find out their official opening, I will let you know about them as well. The downtown is alive, and it's open for business. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional new business to come before the council? New business? Councilmember Montalongo?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I guess new business on, there are still a number of roads in Fourth District, and I'm sure throughout our city that are needing repaired still yet, from, coming from winter to springtime here. And so, I'm just curious. I know during our budget, we have, I think, $600,000 for the entire city for road preservation. So, from those funds, is that where fixing roads, potholes, is that where that comes from?
Not necessarily. That's specifically for pavement preservation. So, those funds are set aside to try to prevent roads from getting into the shape that they are in now. As far as going out and fixing potholes now, that's an operational cost covered inside Public Works' operation budget.
So, one road that I want to bring to your attention, it was just on, was, it's really bad, is Reservoir, Reservoir Boulevard, out the way from probably almost the entire road itself. It's really bad, especially in front of the Proctor Endowment Home area. It's really bad, really in poor condition. And also, I had a question. I don't, I was trying to think back. I don't think we received a report. We had our road scanned last year, and I don't believe we had a report back on that.
No, we brought forward the Public Works' project plan last meeting, and our plan is to bring forward a road condition report next meeting on March 27th, where we can show you where we were in 2014. And now that we've had three years of road funding, and if we're behind the curve or ahead of the curve, basically, it gave us a second point on our curve for our data in that presentation, or that report is anticipated to come back here next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further new business? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
We're at citizens' opportunity to address the city council.
Citizens to address. Name and address for the record, please. Five-minute speaking limit. First up is Mary Hayes.
My name's Mary Hayes. You all know me by now, and I live at 2915 West Anne Street, and I am a woman of our town. And I represent the people in my district, the people on the city bus, and the Mexicans, most, most all the people in District 1, except the 999 that voted for Denise. But that's now the here and there. But what I came to talk to you about today is, I was at City Link Board Meeting yesterday, and they got a bill for $1,500 for beautifications from the city. And my question is, who is sending out these bills? And how did they come up with the figure $1,500? Now, the City of Peoria really needs to invest in some beautifications and some nice flowers in those nice little cages that they built last year. Like Normal has, they have some nice snowball plants and trees that bloom and everything. But $1,500 a month for plants and beautification and banners? Who comes up with the figure? I mean, who sends the bill out? This is a mystery to me. It's, I don't understand, I don't understand how this, these people get bills for things that happen. And there's no flowers in the pots. I mean, what is the $1,500 for if you don't have any beautification to begin with? I'd like to know the answer to that.
Ms. Hayes, we'd be glad, either the Public Works Director or the City Manager, after the meeting, we'd be glad to help you out with that. Next, we have Merle Samny.
Hello, I'm Merle Samny, 3922 North Columbus. Okay, so, I just wanted to bring your attention to something has been, I think, going on now for quite some time. I think it's very alarming. And I've been getting a lot of reports, and a lot of my friends also, and, you know, a lot of the people that I've been connecting with, been raising a concern about that 1% difference, which may not sound like a whole lot of money. But, you know, the City of Peoria is charging, you know, sales tax. I know if you go and purchase anything, you have to pay 6.25, you know, it goes for state tax, 1%, which goes for, you know, county tax, and the rest goes for the city, right? Which is about 1.75, right? Which totals to 9%. Compare that with just maybe a couple minutes extra drive to East Peoria, just right across the river from us, you'll find that there are, you know, Tazewell County rates are half a percent instead of 1%, which is for the county of Peoria, and there's 1.25% for city tax, which totals to 8% instead of 9%. But think about it. How many car dealerships we have in the City of Peoria? How many, you know, people, because now we're talking about for every $100 that you're spending, you are saving. Now, if you start making the math for big merchandise, like, you know, $1,000 plus, $5,000, $20,000, $30,000, $50,000, that's a lot of business that the City of Peoria has been losing. And honestly, you know, thinking about, you know, volume versus, you know, just making that 1%, I mean, if you tell people, at least, I'm not saying be lesser than the City of East Peoria, but if we can just keep the rate the same way, like, just like the City of East Peoria, at least we're competitive. At least we can provide our citizens, because right now, we're talking about over 115,000 people living within the City of Peoria. Many of them, and I'm telling you, many of them are just making that trip to East Peoria to, you know, make their bigger purchases, to save that 1% on city tax. Just food for thought. The second thing I wanted to mention is the fact that now we're having to, you know, unfortunately, tear down the structure of the riverfront after spending so much money, you know. And I'm not here to judge anyone or to hold anyone accountable, but smart people always learn from their mistakes and always learn from, you know, history is there for a reason, is documented, so that the future generations learn from, you know, the older generations, obviously. But I wanted to mention that we have a treasure within our city, really. It's a treasure that I know plenty of cities across country would die to have, which is that beautiful riverfront that we have in our city. The Illinois River, it's a humongous, you know, river. It's beautiful. It's clean, you know, may not be actually very clean, but it looks clean, you know, it looks beautiful. So, what's next? Now that the, I'm not telling you to build another structure and, you know, kind of tarnish the view and everything. I know a lot of people want to have rather a park, but what can we have? You know, talking about tourism, we just reappointed, you know, the commissioners for that tourism commission, and what can we do to attract tourists from across central Illinois? You know, I've traveled across the city of, I mean, the state of Illinois, and when it comes to central Illinois, I think we are the most beautiful city, hands down, you know. But really, what can we have on that riverfront to be able to capture, you know, the attention of the rest of Illinois? We have a beautiful place. So, I hope it just doesn't end by us tearing up that structure and just, you know what? Oh, we're feeling bad for all the hundreds of thousands of dollars that got wasted, and we're so scared from the public to take another step. But no, I think we need to have courage, and we need to have something planned for the future, and we really must take advantage of that. And we really must take advantage of that beautiful, beautiful treasure that we have here, which is the riverfront. And I think we should come up with a plan to attract, because right now, everything is moving out of Peoria. But we need to bring rather people to Peoria. Look at all the cities across the country, what they do with their riverfronts. Well, it's just amazing to see the kind of stuff that has been happening, all the entertainment centers, all the beautiful parks, all these great things that they do on the riverfronts to take advantage of it. So, you know, glad.
Madam Clerk.
We have an executive session, so we're at adjournment.
Thank you. We have a motion to adjourn by Councilmember Turner, seconded by Councilmember Regenbach. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. We'd like to thank H. Wayne Wilson and his listening audience at WCBU as well as Cable Channel 22. We'd like to remind everybody that our St. Patrick's Day Parade steps off this Saturday downtown at 11:00 a.m. Everyone is welcome. And we'd also like to welcome the IHSA Big Schools to Peoria as well. This meeting is adjourned.